I will now call to order the regular meetings of the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Water District, and City Council of the City of Victorville, and also call for a special meeting of the Victorville Water District, the Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the City of Victorville. As is customary at this time, we will now have our invocation, and this will be led by Pastor Doug Story from the High Desert Church. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Captain Taylor.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we do thank you for another day of life. And, Lord, as we prepare to begin this meeting, Lord, we would ask for your guidance. Lord, we would ask for your blessing upon this city. Lord, these leaders which you have appointed, Lord, I pray that you would speak into them. Lord, that you would lead them. Lord, that they would make wise decisions. God, we thank you for being able to be caretakers of the things that you have given us, and, Lord, the responsibilities that you have given to each of us. Lord, and I would pray that these men and women, Lord, would make decisions that would be for the good of the people, Lord, for the good of your kingdom. Lord, we give you this evening and this time in your son's name. Amen.
We'll now go into the public comment, and this is the opportunity that afforded by state law to anyone who wishes to address the City Council. You have three minutes, and if you wish to address the City Council, there's these cards in the foyer. You fill them out and bring them to a city clerk and put you on a list here. Also, if you will put the item number, if it's public comment, it's item number one. Any of the other ones will be the item that you wish to address the City Council about. Okay, the first one we have is Siobhan Gates.
Good evening, council members. Siobhan Gates is Miss Victorville. She is a student of Silverado High School, so I'm going to tell you the rest about herself.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Nice meeting you all. My name is Siobhan Gates. As you know, and I am Miss Victorville, the new Miss Victorville. I do attend Silverado High School. I am a junior there, and I currently obtain a 4.13. Taking AP classes just got through with an AP test today. I play all kinds of sports there, volleyball and basketball, and I am also the ASB president there. I will also be ASB president next year. After high school, I do want to attend Stanford University where I will study neurology. My life ambition is to find a cure for Alzheimer's, so, and I know that Stanford has an outstanding medical field. So, I am visiting here today with my lovely mother, and as you do know, Mr. Garner Morris. He is the one who got me into all the patentry, so I thank him very much. And I also thank him for giving me the opportunity to meet the lovely group of people who help keep my home city afloat. I love Victorville. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations on your achievement. Congratulations.
So much.
Just want to let everybody know that the only way you can get higher than a 4.0 is to get an A in those accelerated classes, is top of the line, the top 10% ever, so that's, and you go over 4.0, that's incredible.
Well, I certainly hope you're quick to find the cure for Alzheimer's, because my wife is accusing me of having it rather frequently now. I could use the help.
I think we all could.
Yeah. Garner Morris? Was that, okay, very good. We have Ellen Pierskowski.
I just came over here to let all the council know. I own the property on Hisprayer Road and Center Street, and since the economy is...
Pull the mic up a little bit.
Since the economy is not doing good, and no bank's willing to loan me money to do the construction right now, and they said for meanwhile, so you have to do something else, and I have a sick daughter, and I just want to, I don't want no donation from anybody. All I just want to make a living and provide the medical for my daughter, and I just want to put it temporarily through the stand in my lot, and until, you know, the economy is going to turn around, so at least I can pay the medical for my daughter. That's all I'm here tonight for. So, this way, if you guys, you know, because I already approached the Mr., I think, Bill Webb, and he said there is some kind of, you know, we have, we are not going to let you have it, but unless we're going to have some kind of, you know, consideration and talking with the mayor. So, I said, okay, and that's when I came to your secretary, and I wanted to make an appointment and even see you, and your secretary said you can go tonight, and then publicly you can talk. So, and also, the area I am right now, every day there is vandalism in my property. They stole my signs three times, and they threw all kinds of bottles, you know, beers and condoms all over, so that way I want to clean it, so at least the old town, I can, you know, not only creating the job, and plus, you know, I like to clean the area, so inviting the people in that neighborhood then. So, that's what I'm here tonight, so I'm hoping you guys can help me out then, since the economy is like that until, you know, the banks starting to be lenient, so then I can, you know, get the money from them to build it face by face, my project then, so, but unfortunately, my hand is so tight right now. I can't do anything, except I don't want to go do, I mean, I don't have any other job, except just, I want to just feed my family. And I have a lovely daughter. Unfortunately, she's sick. She cannot move from the bed, and I ended up with a heavy medical bill every month, so I'd rather even, you know, go there, sit and work, but make a honest living, take the money from my, you know, medical bill for my daughter. That's why I'm here then. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I was here at the last meeting, and I made a comment on what was going on, and as you see, I had them pass out my water bills. There is still not my trash bill. I still have not received it. It's not getting better. This is what's bothering me, and I made a copy of my tax bill, and the reason I did that is because the tax bill, we're still paying Baldi Mesa standby fees, which I feel it's the City of Victorville, everything should be turned over to the City of Victorville, not Baldi Mesa, because there is no Baldi Mesa anymore. So, why am I paying that? Then we have more problems. You've got that, you've got the two water bills, and no trash bill, and last time I come up here and said I got three or four trash bills in one bill. We don't want to do this again. It needs to be straightened out and straightened out properly, and it's not getting done, and you guys aren't doing a thing about it. I believe Baldi Mesa did their master plan. Victor Valley had not done theirs. A Baldi Mesa employee told them how much money Baldi Mesa had in the reserve, so they took it. We would have paid our loan down if we would have had the money. The board voted not to give it to them. So, here we are. We've been ripped off, ripped off, and ripped off. Then, this week, what happens to me, but I get a call. The water trucks are out there in front of my gate. Can you open the gate? Sure. I open the gate for them. Not one truck, two trucks. They took and changed the meter, which is wonderful. I'm proud of they changed the meter, but it don't take three guys and two trucks. Now, something is wrong. You guys are down at the bottom of the bucket, but we're doing things like this. Now, my neighbor said there was four guys, two guys in each truck, that went to her house when they changed the water meters. They're pulling out the automatic readers out of the meters and putting in new meters, which is wonderful, but it don't take that many people to do it, I don't believe. So, I think you guys should really look and see what is really going on, and start paying attention, because I'm really disturbed about what's going on. I don't like paying Baldi Mesa when Baldi Mesa's not there anymore. Okay? Thank you.
We'll now go into our regular meetings. First one is the Library Board of Trustees Agenda. Are there any revisions?
No revisions.
Okay, we have a consent calendar. Next is the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority Agenda. No revisions to the agenda.
Revisions.
We do have the consent calendar.
For approval?
Member Allman, may I get a vote from you?
And we did have our closed session.
Yes.
No need for a closed session at this time on this item.
Next is the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Agenda, and this is Councilman Caldwell.
Thank you, Mayor Calberalis. Item three is the consent calendar. Unless there's a request to remove an item, that would be adopted with one motion.
Move for approval?
Items four, five, and six, the closed session items, as enumerated on the agenda, have been dealt with in the four o'clock meeting, I believe. That would conclude the Airport Authority's agenda.
We now have the Victorville Redevelopment Agency Agenda. No revisions to the agenda. We have a consent calendar.
There is one revision, Chairman Calberalis. Item number four references a companion City Council Agenda item 11, but that is in error. It should reference item number 12 as the companion item.
Item number four is a request to approve the sub-recipient agreement between the City of Victorville and the Victorville Redevelopment Agency to administer the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and to authorize the Director of Economic Development to execute the agreement and the necessary documentation for implementation of the program. This is also a companion item to the City Council item two, number 12. Closed session items were discussed at the 4:00 p.m. meeting. Victorville Water District Agenda. No revisions to the agenda. Consent calendar.
Move for approval?
We now go into the City of Victorville City Council Agenda. Any revisions to the agenda?
Yes, there are two public hearing items, number three and four, that are actually to be held on June 16th. The hearing should be opened, any testimony taken, and then continued to June 16th.
Okay. Item number three is a public hearing. A public hearing, a call to adopt resolution number 09019 through 09031, which would approve the annual assessments for landscape maintenance assessment districts, drainage facility assessment districts, and maintenance assessment districts at the May 5, 2009 meeting, in error. This item will be heard at the June 16, 2009 City Council meeting, and the public hearing should be continued accordingly. I will now open up the, we'll open the public hearing on item number three. Anyone wishing to address the council, item number three. Hearing none, I'll, I'll, we'll continue this item to the June 16 meeting. Item number four, a request to continue a public hearing establishing parking regulations of recreation vehicles on public streets as set forth in orders number 2218. I will now open up the public hearing on item number four. Anyone wishing to address the council, item number four. Hearing none. This item number four will be continued to the June 16 meeting. Item number five, a public hearing call to hear arguments for or against approving the notice of intent to adopt the final mitigated negative declaration for the SCLA East Sewer Truck Line and approve the findings contained in the notice of intent. I will now call the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to address the council, for or against? Item number five. I will now close the public hearing.
Councilman Caldwell, may I get a vote from you?
Item number six, a public hearing call to hear arguments for or against approving the notice of intent to adopt the final mitigated negative declaration for the SCLA Northern reclaimed water line after approving the findings contained in the notice of intent and rescind the previous approval at the January 20, 2009 public hearing. I will now open the public hearing on item number six. Anyone wishing to address the council on item number six, for or against? Item number six. The public hearing is now closed. I will entertain a motion. Item number seven, a public hearing call to hear arguments for or against approving the notice of intent to adopt the final mitigated negative declaration for the SCLA West Side Sewer and Industrial Sewer Truck Lines after approving the findings contained in a notice of intent and rescind the previous approval at the January 20, 2009 public hearing. I will now open the public hearing for item number seven. Anyone wishing to address the council on item number seven? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. I will entertain a motion. Item number eight, a public hearing call to hear arguments for or against approving the notice of intent to adopt the final mitigated negative declaration for the SCLA West Side Water Line after reviewing the findings contained in the notice of intent and rescind the previous approval at the October 21, 2008 public hearing. I will now open up the public hearing on item number eight. Anyone wishing to address the City Council on item number eight? Hearing none. I will close item number eight.
Move for approval?
Item number nine, a public hearing call to one received citizen and agency comments regarding the draft action plan for fiscal year 2009-2010 Annual Action Plan, two to adopt the housing and community development projects set forth by council at its March 17, 2009 meeting, three, approve and adopt the plans as presented for submittal to Department of Housing and Urban Development, and four, authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents for submittal to HUD. We'll now open up item number nine for public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on item number nine? Hearing none. I will close item number nine and entertain a motion.
Motion for approval?
We now have the consent calendar. I would entertain a motion.
Councilman Caldwell, may I get a vote?
Item number 11, a request to ratify the expenditure plan for the 2009 Ryan Justice Assistance Grant, the JAG, allocation for 2009-2010, and to authorize the city manager or his deputy to process all documents required for the program administration.
Motion?
Item number 12, did we do this with the RDA?
Yes, yes you did.
13, item 13, request to approve the consultant professional services agreement with ITM Associates Incorporated. Item 14 is a presentation of an auto-agency service agreement for areas previously served by the Victorville Recreation and Park District.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item has actually started in 2005, the dissolution of the Recreation and Park District, the dissolution of the sanitar, excuse me, sanitary district, and dissolution of the Fire Protection District. The sanitary district was completed and dissolved in September of 2008. The Wreck and Park District and Fire District were approved at that time. However, there were conditions from LAFCO on the Wreck and Park District that we enter into an agreement with the county. Even though we were conditioned to do this, they still wanted us to enter into an agreement with the county that we would continue to provide services at the same level as we had been for those areas that are outside the city limits but were previously served by the Wreck and Park District, such as Mountain View Acres and Spring Valley Lake. Something we have previously agreed to, but they wanted a formal agreement between us and the county on this issue. The next issue, item 15, is similar in nature. It's something that was simply a condition of LAFCO.
Thank you. Is there a motion for item 14?
For approval of the agreement?
Item 15, Fire District Resolution Number 09033, initiating proceedings for the sphere of influence expansion of the San Marino County Fire District and annexation to the San Marino County Fire District. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Item 16 is council reports. We'll start with Councilman McCracken.
Thank you. A couple items I just would like to acknowledge, Nancy Jackson, who's here with Southern California Edison. She was very helpful in a situation that was brought to my attention, as well as Mayor Calberalis, regarding a local establishment, Johnny Revs, who, I guess they were notified that there was going to be a power outage, and it turned out that that wasn't actually going to affect them, but it was of definite concern to that restaurant, as they have 50 people coming in tomorrow, plus Mother's Day weekend coming up, and they did not have really enough notice. So, in the nature of being business friendly, I thank you in Southern California Edison for all that you did on that over the last day and a half. As well, we're approving a lot of expenditures up here at the council, and it's, it's kind of concerned me that I, that I've asked on several occasions for some sort of financial documentation. Our city manager, Jim Cox, has promised me that at the next council, maybe, sorry, Jim, I want to get this on the public record, that you will have that documentation and those financial statements and all that for this council to review. Most, most cities at this time are, are already approving budgets, and we don't, we're not even there, so I just appreciate you and the rest of the staff working diligently to get that done, and I'll look forward to getting that report at our May 19 meeting.
I just have a suggestion. Today was kind of different. We had closed session first, and here we are at our council meeting. I really would like to see this done permanently, but not at four o'clock. If we could start at five, I think that would be to all of our advantage. Mr. Caldwell said he could make it at five?
Five-ish.
Five-ish. Okay, so we'll start at five-ish, but I think it would be a, and it would be money-saving with all the attorneys and special people that we have sitting here while we're doing our regular council meeting. We can get them in and out.
Well, I think our attorney can, can probably draw up whatever necessary documentation would be.
Back on the next agenda, we can agenda as a resolution to adopt so that you have your closed session regularly scheduled at five o'clock, and if I had to run over, it could be adjourned and then continued at the end.
Caldwell?
Thank you, Mayor Calberalis. Last Thursday, we had a monumental event in the City of Victorville. The National Rail Administration conducted its public hearing with regard to the Desert Express, environmental aspects of it. It was not reported in the press, and I think that's unfortunate, but I thought I would report to you that, first, there was a substantial turnout of people. It was, it was really, I was surprised how many people showed up. And while I can't give you a list of everybody that spoke in support of the, of the project, it did include Congressman McKeon, First District Supervisor Mitsenfeld, Assemblyman Knight. There was a representative there from organized labor who spoke in favor of it. Victorville Chamber, the Hispanic Chamber, the San Marino County Fair Board, all of those agencies and individuals had, they were either there in person or had representatives there. Not one person spoke in opposition. And they had all the charts and all the graphs up, and there was a period of time before the public hearing was called to order for people to not only look at the, at the graphics, but talk to people from the National Rail. at the graphics, but talk to people from, uh, the National Rail, uh, Authority. And, uh, I thought that, uh, in terms of validation of the project, I, I can't remember the last time that a federal agency, who was the lead agency on, on a project like this, conducted a public hearing in, in, in Barstow, and I had people, uh, from the National Rail Authority who said it's the first public hearing they've ever been to where there wasn't at least somebody to speak in, in opposition, so that's the extent of my report.
Uh, just to add on, as I was there, as well as, with Terry, there were probably over a hundred people, uh, in the audience, um, they've, uh, modified the project, they've been working on it for almost five years, I mean, this was the first, this will be the first, uh, uh, what do you call it, uh, not, they tell me not to use the word jet train, it's, um, um, it's, it's a new electrical powered train that goes 150 miles an hour, it's, uh, quite a bit faster actually than the previous design feature they were going to do, because they, they're working all over Europe in this fashion, so, uh, the statistics on this, uh, train, you can get from Victorville to Las Vegas, wherever that station's going to be, and there's about three different options, uh, as you're coming into Vegas, but, uh, uh, in a hundred, in an hour and 20 minutes, so, uh, those are some, really some neat, uh, features. Obviously, as that train becomes, uh, construction happens there, the spill-off from that project is going to be incredible. Uh, the statistics show that there's, uh, thousands of jobs just, uh, uh, associated with the construction, there's 500 permanent jobs just at the train, uh, the train delivery and, and maintenance yard alone, uh, on this project, and they felt the spinoff is going to be in the tens of thousands of jobs, ancillary jobs, uh, coming off of this over the next, uh, uh, five years or so as it builds out, and you're going to see a frenzy of people the minute they start during, and I know they don't believe it, but this is private money, and the private sector can get out there and get something done if government will get out of the way, and that's precisely what has happened here. Um, what an opportunity, uh, for this whole country to see a, a fastly developed, uh, train from Victorville to Las Vegas. I went out there in the internet and blogged around a bit, and there's, um, a couple of comments about, one person said, "Well, I've been to Victorville, boy, I wouldn't leave my car there," you know, it's a kind of a facetious comment to the train going to nowhere. And the fact is that Victorville is an intersection to a SCAG 2030 plan, that we're one of the crucial intersections of the high-speed rail system all over Southern California, and indeed the one that, uh, that will eventually run up to San Francisco. So Victorville's a nexus point, the Palmdale-Lancaster is a nexus point, and the investors in this Las Vegas, uh, train, they know that. So this isn't a train to nowhere, it's a train that's hitting 400,000 people here, that will be a million people in the next 12 years or so, uh, we're the fastest-growing city in the county again this, uh, year as we were last year, last year we were touted, I guess, as the second, uh, fastest growing city in the whole United States, when you reach over 100,000 population, you get into that category, and so we were in that sense. So the city is growing in spite of the economy now, and, uh, as this train and this construction comes along, uh, it's, you're not even going to recognize all that real estate going up the freeway towards Barstow, it's, it'll be an incredible transformation that will be happening, there are many balls in the air, and, uh, you, fortunately, you've got a city like Victorville, a staff and a council that has a vision for those kind of things, and, uh, the perfect place for this, uh, to take place is right here, right now, and I'm excited, and I hope all of you are too.
I would also like to thank Nancy, uh, for her quick work in resolving that problem for, for one of our business owners here in the city of Victorville. I would also like to thank the city of Victorville for supporting the Cinco de Mayo, which is not reported in the daily press either, so, but, uh, we had probably 10,000, 11,000 people out there, maybe more. Uh, it was very successful, but thanks to the city of Victorville, we had Tamara from, uh, our Economic Development, uh, Department, uh, many of the, or staffing of booths out there, we had Yvonne helping us out, and all those, our fire department was there, our police department, and also, uh, the, the folks from Public Works, who are always there to support, and Manny is always there helping us out, so I would like to thank the city for that. And I would also like to ask our city managers to provide us with that finance report, or analysis that we need, is very important, we're, we're, like Ryan said, we're, and we should have been working on our, on our budget by now, but, uh, as important as that is, it's more important that the public know our finances, so where we're at and where we stand, so we can, somebody will ask us a question, we'll be able to answer them in, in, you know, with the facts, so. Having said that, that's it for me, and anybody else that might want to make a comment? Jim, anything?
Mayor Carrionis, before you adjourn the meeting, we still have the special meeting agenda items, so, uh, we open that meeting concurrently, and if we could take action on the item four, the special meeting, you have the Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Water District, and the City Council, uh, there are four different resolutions, and you could adopt them, uh, sitting as all three bodies, uh, consider the items simultaneously, they deal with the, uh, financing of the wastewater treatment facility.
Okay, uh, item number two, and a special meeting then involves the four resolutions, and now we entertain a motion?
No move. Second.
That's all I have.
Okay.
We don't move. No, no, we did them all.
That's what I thought.
And it came back up.
Back up again, well.
And this meeting is adjourned? Okay, we're done? Okay.